Are we ready? Good evening, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order at six thirty PM on Tuesday, August fifteenth. First, order of business is public comments. I see none, I have one. The, the select board was delivered a petition by the patrons of the Dover Free Library, containing thirty-six signatures, nine of which are from out of town. Asking for things that this life board have no, has no control over whatsoever concerning the removal of the past director of the Dover Free Library. So I'm just, I'd like to acknowledge you've received it. All right. New business, renew memorandum of understanding agreement with Somerset and Ricky Harrington. Hello, again, we haven't seen about a couple of years?
Three.
Three.
A couple of memorands. I think we sent over one, I just.
You did.
Find it a little bit.
Oh.
It's not overly modified, I just put it in the. What I originally wanted to do is to have the state department actually send me the check for seven hundred and fifty so I could send it to you personally.
Oh.
As the state goes, they figured out a better way and then did an art payment to your treasurer.
We see, we have. Yes. Okay. Okay, yes, we did.
And the seven fifty represents two years of the agreement of five hundred dollar stipend, stipend, which people didn't ask for, but I felt was what should be part of the contract. And then another two hundred and fifty that gets us up to current. I think that it really doesn't make sense for me to come back next year. I think we should put it off for three years, thus the new contract says July first of two thousand twenty-six. At that time, I'll make sure that you either get presented a check for seven hundred and fifty dollars or that the treasurer will receive one from the state of.
Okay. I just saw everybody knows this is an agreement because Somerset is unincorporated. And, or, I guess, unorganized, which is an odd thing to call. People who live in the, but anyway, it basically, it basically provides Somerset residents a place to vote and a place to deposit their trash.
That's right, and I thank you very much for that. And I know the people up there do all of them. I also publicly want to thank the town of Dover for being such a good neighbor. Unfortunately, not all towns are good neighbors. And thus, it just makes it easy to do my job. So I'm hoping we can continue this for a long time. I'm going to ask you to not consider it, but take, keep in mind if there is a fire that breaks out in Somerset, we'd love to have Dover respond. Because the last time I got into a meeting, and I don't want to go into a big issue here, and I'm not trying to downplay or actually down, put downtown, but we had a three thousand dollar contract with another town down here for fire and rescue. Which I thought it was pretty steep considering there's only three time full residents in Somerset. Unfortunately, they didn't want to renew it unless they wanted an eight percent increase every year from here on out. That is an absolute. That's not going to happen no matter what we do. I don't care what, we're not. So because I didn't sign that and agree to pay him the three thousand dollar extortion, I'll call it. They decided to tell their fire department, don't buy responding to Somerset. So I'm just asking you, again, as a good neighbor, let your fire department realize that we have no protection over there. More than half, more than willing to come over, we're happy to have you. You'll probably just be reporting out of the fire pit that's left after it all.
It's a long ways away.
Yeah, it's a bit of a drive.
So, do you have no coverage now?
There is no coverage, there's no, there's no ambulance coverage. The issue with the ambulance is, is pretty simple. Again, three-time residents, full-time residents. And what I heard was, well, you know, we have an awful lot of people responding into Somerset. The problem is, they don't know where Somerset ends and where Glossary begins. Most of Somerset, when you go into that town, to the left is Glossary. Now, I've been in Glossary since two thousand flat, been supervisor since two thousand three. Never, ever got a bill for rescue or fire in Glossary. Never. So I'm not sure really why I'd be getting them at Somerset, especially when they don't even know where they are. So again, I feel bad that I can't provide that service to my constituents. Then on the other hand, they understand that really, we don't think we're getting our money's worth, even if we did prescribe to that service. Again, don't, I didn't really come here to bitch. I really came here to thank the people of Dover for being such good neighbors.
Well, thank you. I don't know that we're going to have any kind of answer or anything to that. Our fire chief is not here. Our, you know, we, and we don't run rescue, so. But, thank you for your comments and just only want to make a motion to have the chair sign this.
I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding between the unorganized town of Somerset and the town of Dover for specified services.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So if I sign this one, Mr. Harrington.
If you wouldn't mind signing both, I sign both at the moment, I'll take one whole.
Okay. Okay, I see, there's two. Does that, does that work for you, Jeanette? If I sign one, two.
Or you can just leave me, leave me that.
The other one.
Yeah, leave me one.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Do your residents join your family rescue? Because as an individual, as a I join every year and then that gets me access to rescue.
No.
Maybe.
They might not be there.
Here you go, all signs.
That's a good thought.
We'll keep this.
Yeah. If they should pay, they probably would respond.
Yeah. Maybe contact your family rescue and ask them if they would consider offering memberships.
Yeah.
Because it's only through families.
Wasn't familiar with that idea. Yeah, they have a membership program.
Yeah.
You, you, you can, you can do it or you don't.
Okay.
But I will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That might be the quickest route.
Right.
Okay, back to business.
Thank you, sir.
Back to business. We have Green Mountain Power coming back again. Tim Jones is here to address, he's sent out information about our, our concerns, but there may be other ones. Oh, sorry, Sullivan and Powers, sorry.
Okay, he skipped over.
No, not now, I've unskipped.
We're, okay. Although it's, it's already a done deal, but
yeah.
Appreciate your signature on it, so.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't see it till after.
Lots of times it seems to come in.
Yeah, it goes to you guys, I don't see it, so it doesn't come to my attention.
Oh.
So it's because you're engaging them.
All right, so this is a board, the board wants to sign the agreement to have Sullivan and Powers do the eleven thousand eight hundred dollar short audit, right?
Yes. So make a motion that we sign the agreement with Sullivan and Powers for an audit for a fee of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second by Dan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, Joe, that pen that you took? There you go. All right.
Now.
Now we can go to unfinished business. Sorry, I jumped again. Come on up. So, we had a bunch of questions, those were answered, I think there might be some other questions. And you sent over a revised agreement, potentially. Correct. So, one member, one community member who is on Zoom sent over a couple of questions. I don't know that the board has heard those questions that, Mr., how do you say it, Kay's or?
That's right, yes. Let me turn on my video.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi.
All right. One, so we had a couple of questions.
It wasn't just a question, just a suggestion.
So, what the first suggestion was, the town should ask GMP for references from other towns where similar projects have been completed in the recent past. Any problems they encountered and solutions found need to be considered prior to implementing in Dover. Do you want to address that one?
Sure, I did actually have a chance to speak with Mr. Kay's directly, so I'll just kind of preface, you know, sort of the top of the list when we left your last time was contacting all of our customer landowners along these projects, which we have done. Out of the thirty-nine contacts we made, I had seventeen direct conversations, which I thought was a pretty good pretty good stat there and left, certainly left my contact information, there's followed up. Folks mentioned having looked back at the August first meeting and I think there's possibly a couple other folks here tonight. So to Mr. Kay's point, we are looking into having a portal on GMP's website so we can post up this information and share maps. As we discussed, as part of this, the maps that we have shared is sort of the traditional way that these projects were redesigned. You know, our real ask here is more of a design-build approach with the town's permission, the town's roads as sort of the backbone for our ability to be able to you know, bring these lines to the road and rebuild them. Certainly, some of the landlords we've spoken to, everyone is supportive. And certainly, we have existing easements with folks, so you know, if this were to work for avail here and get the town's permission, you know, we'll work with each individual landowner to address how their houses are connected, any sort of service upgrades they might be contemplating. Certainly, leaving things in place where they might want to see them left in place, what, what have you, so. I think, again, we have existing right-of-way easements out there that, you know, those agreements, you know, still stand or wishes to get everything to the road and abandon those avenues, but yeah, as a, Mr. Kay's other question was, the nearest project that we have here is over in Sada Sally, which is Harmonyville. So we have a similar project over there where we did, you know, a smaller scale job in the road, buried in the road, and certainly we can, you know, make whatever contacts or get a letter or, you know, however, you know, you would like to see that manifest itself, I think, most of our undergrounding over the past bunch of years has been by request and a lot of landowner and different applications, so. And also our urban areas are much more, you know, prevalent area where we see a lot of this undergrounding, so admittedly, this this is a really something that we want to try, endeavor to try here, Dover's got a great setup for it with some good long roads, long straightaways, so I wish I could sit here and tell you I had a bunch of anecdotal evidence of other towns local to here. I don't, but we are hoping between towns in Woodsboro and Dover that we're able to deliver the technology that that we're hoping to employ here, so just, you know, background, we do have Townsend's approval after my parents here tonight, I actually have a double header, I'm heading up to Woodsboro. Hopefully for the last discussion there, and again, you know, similar concerns and questions, you know, come up as we, we talk about this technology certainly the sensitivities of being in the town roads and, you know, sort of the sense of disruption that that might bring, and I think, you know, just sort of the questions that came up last appearance here certainly reflect that, and so hopefully our agreement is not really wordsmith, but also just sort of addressing and reaching out to our our landowners and customers that feel that we have a very supportive environment here and we've been able to answer the questions that have come our way so far, so obviously tonight we'll bring more questions possibly.
Travis.
So, I have a question. Two years ago, the board here had approved an underground reroute, and we have yet to see any construction done on it, on Harris Road. And, you know, I I'd like to know, like, what's the status of that project, if you can tell me, or if it's still in where it's.
I certainly can't say it right now.
Okay.
Yes, I've been with the company for a little over a year, so I certainly can get an answer tomorrow in terms of, do you recall what the nature of the project was?
It was, it was, you know, just a long stretch of the road.
It was going quite a ways down through just like you're going right down the road under our culverts. They pitched the same thing, you know, about replacing culverts and said that they would, they would hold off on construction for the fall and do it in the spring and reach out and we never heard anything, not that I'm, you know, I just was like, nope, that's
just something you have to be again, and it's been two years from a previous project like this and I haven't seen move, you know, so I'm curious.
That's a good question, Travis, thank you.
We're starting, I will just say, we're starting at the other end on Monday, actually, we're starting in the town on Monday. So, positive sign, anyway. Getting underway.
Yes.
I've got three power lines on the road along two communication lines under both sides. Those shores are going to have, they're going to get destroyed, like you want to know this road.
Well, today?
Yeah.
I think once we go to everyone's, before we do any construction, if we're granted this permission, we will be going station to station to every customer, landowner, evaluate where their services, how they're served, any concerns, how are we going to pick up your service, and so.
One other thing.
Same thing, you know, so those type of.
One thing, you pull up the maps and look at my property. Now, power line comes up from North Street behind my house.
Yes.
Is there any way to put it underground on that? On that ground, on that right away?
Absolutely.
I'd be for that one hundred.
And that's kind of.
A lot of problems.
Sure.
They'll be about whatever land that's there to do that.
And that's an option I, you know, touched on just a few minutes ago, is where we, where the line currently rests, if folks, you know, have the appetite to put it underground right where it stands, again, we'll do that, so, you know, that's an ability that we have. So just really sort of be case by case as we piece it all together.
That's all my concerns, if you can.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I would just.
Yes.
Excuse me, I'd just like to say, it's very important that Green Mountain Power coordinates with the town, obviously, especially Travis, and that they, they keep up to date on what they're doing and when they're doing it. There's like, you know, this is not Route Thirty, but it's only North Street, but there, there's a lot of traffic here from the north that comes out from outside of Dover through the town, probably from, because of Route Thirty, you know, and something to keep in mind when, when this thing is enabled.
Yes.
Another concern is, turn the road. That power line runs out my property in the trees, as well as the phone. The phone lines, I can reach up and round them just standing there. If I take my excavator, it was under the power lines. Is that leg to serve to two houses, three houses up there? Is that going in the road as well? And get it off that property?
We can look at that.
Or at least cut it and get it up where it needs to be.
It's an opportunity, I think, just to look at it, it's, you know, tangent to the project, so.
That's, 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 you know, my, that's where a lot of the outages come from, is that stretch.
Dan?
Yes, and the revised letter of August eighth, asking us for final permission doesn't state, even though it's on the supplementary part of it, it said that the project will start in August to September. Originally, it said it would end in October. It'd be nice to know what the timeline would be on the signed part of it, so we have something to work.
I need to, you talked about timing overall and you wanted us not to be, you know, I think we have to sort of.
That does seem a little aggressive on the timeline, we'll have it done, but I'm, I don't know, but it does seem and to be not, you know, be out of there before, before we get, you know, frozen roads and, and we can't, we can't have roads dug up when it's the winter, and also we were concerned about tourists and foliage and everything else that comes along in October and. Where, where is that, Dan? That you're exactly on this document?
I don't have the page front, but it said it's going, originally, on the original thing that it provided to us, it said the project would be completed by October, but in the letter that we got together today, it said that it would start in August. Timeline, as soon as we have permission from each town, Perfect World will be completed by October. Some page two of the original minutes.
Oh, it's in the minutes.
Okay. So, is that a realistic timeline?
So, yeah, I think we were talking, just giving that out, if we got your approval here by the end of the month, you know, it's August, so basically, you know, we can start in September. We had talked about our capabilities and starting at both ends of the project, or triaging certain areas, so is there a timeline, you know, that's more available, I think, again, we wanted to avoid traffic and being ahead of your roads, certainly in the foliage season, I think, our tent and our leadership group was here in the spring, really promising relief, you know, winter, so we have the ability to string it out, you know, you know, provide relief around the roads, and you know, we can pause or work in different areas, so if you want a hard schedule, I can certainly send you one back, but you know, if we start September, October, certainly probably a three, three, three-month project.
Mm-hmm, and we're starting to bump into.
So we want to avoid taking up any blacktop, you know, so we kind of went through the gamut of, you know, what's coming next in terms of seasons, so. We have identified another opportunity at the end of the line on Robbins Road, where we have a feeder tie that we can actually make and tie two circuits together, so we're looking around also at what other things we can do immediately. That would allow us to, you know, shift some load and onto another circuit where, you know, maybe the outages are more prevalent. So, but, yeah, I could give you a schedule, and if it's the town's wish to, you know, to have us off the roads in October, or some variation on that. You know, open to suggestions.
Travis.
I'd like to see everything put up by the end of October. Nothing opened after.
So what's the situation if, at the end of October, you're not done? Do you just button it up and come back and when the mud season's over? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, seems reasonable. It does seem, it does, so are you going to be doing construction five days a week, seven days a week?
Five days a week.
Five days a week?
Yeah.
How early are you going to start?
Typical construction day, seven to five.
Seven to five. Okay.
We're going to be using contractors and that's, well, sometimes they do, you know, four days a week, but certainly we weren't considering opening up the Saturday. We could certainly have that conversation, you know, October, beginning of October.
Can anybody hear me? I doubt it.
Can, can you? Jerry, did you have a, a question?
Yeah, I, I'm so sorry, I meant to come and be there in person and I forgot all about it, and I missed the very beginning of this. But, the question that I have is why you want to put the electrical lines, it's my understanding that you want to put the electrical lines down the middle of the road. Is that correct?
At least five feet in, but, you know, more towards the center than the shoulder is what we're working towards.
So, so what I heard you say was at least five foot in, five feet in, but closer to the shoulder, why do you want to do that? Because the civil engineers that I have, I spoke to one civil engineer who's been building roads for a very long time. And their opinion is putting electrical lines down the middle of the road is probably the worst thing that you can do, so can you explain why you want to do that?
We're trying to get as much road purchase as we can, I think what we've seen in the roads around here is the recent flooding is, you know, at least five feet in, I think is what we say in our agreement, you know, so loosely speaking, the middle of the road, but trying to stay more towards the middle of the road because we have seen some severe, you know, road killings and, you know, the storm showed us, you know, where we would want to be, taking a pretty good tour of the roads around here, and I think we're feeling confident that that is, that's a good place to be for this technology.
So besides Harmonyville, Green Mountain Power around the state, where have they done other projects like this?
Yeah, a lot of time it's by request or.
But like, like a multi-town coming up.
No, no, I just said, at this scale, we have not done it in a rural area.
That's a little unnerving, I guess, considering, I mean, I don't know, I, you're, we're not engineers and we're not, we, we're.
I am.
Yeah, you are, but we're trying to do what's best for the town and get reliable service and so it sounds like a good idea, maybe, in reality, I don't know. You know, and, and you know, if we'd had Harris Road as a test, see how that went, you know, that's a much smaller.
Yeah.
Run. Mm-hmm. So maybe Harris Road for the fall.
Good idea.
And try it, I mean, that's not a long run. I don't know.
That makes sense.
That is a good idea, I think it is.
Yes, Sarah.
As much as I would love to see North Street fixed.
Hold on, hold on, yes, Sarah.
Do you know why the Harris Road didn't get done?
Yes, only been here, here.
Okay.
So, I guess that's a big question, and, and because it's such a novel project, we'd like to know why Harris Road didn't happen, then actually, that seems like a good place to try, so that we, we get an idea of how much, how much disruption, how, you know, if, if it's going to hold up through the winter, I know I'm, we're probably sending you on another. Yeah. Yeah.
Talking about the map. So what, how quickly will you dismantle what is in place?
Not until the other lines build or energize, is it something that you would leave up for a little bit, for at least one season to make sure it all works, or are you just going to tear the thing right down right away?
Well, typically. But my concern is, just as Vicky is, she doesn't want, she, she's concerned with the, you know, where the first one's doing it. My concern is, I don't want you to go away because we're not solving any problem that we already have out there. Okay, but if what you put in the ground isn't working, you know, is it possible, and this is obviously above you, to leave for a little bit what's pre-existing there, I don't know if that's a pain in the butt on your end, but it might well the neighbors to be, and everyone involved, it would be more a little bit of, or seeing that this is a first-time project of this extent. Because if it all falls apart or comes apart in a storm, how long's it going to take to fix it, supposedly from a line up? Or re-energizing what's in the woods, you know, type of thing, so that's something to figure out.
Thank you for your thoughts, yes.
The phone lines are still going to be on the same poles.
Well, they're retiring poles, that was one of my questions is, how about if the other utilities don't move? Because right now, down the upper part of Holland, we have duplicate poles, we had one set, now we have another set. So now we have poles, one carrying telecommunications, one carrying electric. We had one set, now we have another set, so now we have poles, one caring telecommunications, one caring, uh, electric.
They just put a good fighter on the poles and you still.
I know. No, so we're, that, part of the, the nice thing about this was, poles would be retired, potentially. Yes. Um, so yeah, we'd all love to see less poles, right? So I guess unfortunately, we have a lot more questions and I, I feel bad that we didn't remember about Harris Road. Thank you Travis.
Sorry, until after we had talked at, at last meeting, I'm like. I wonder what happens to this other project that has already been approved and we haven't heard a thing. What about all the filter power damage? That was, that fabric was of, of a concern of mine that, that that was gonna get cut into.
Yeah.
I think we, you know. Like, I'd like, like, like you said, I think Harris Road, getting Harris Road done or a small project like that that I can see and. See what. How it goes and how I think it might affect our infrastructure. Probably.
Jim.
It's a total of their freedom. Or divided by sixty, that is really aggressive skin. I don't think it's realistic.
Sarah, um. Since. If we want to go forward with the Harris Road project, we're also still looking at kind of a tight turnaround, can we start getting answers? In email form, but for the board and for Travis, so that when we come into the next meeting. We'll have a lot more information to be able to make some decisions, instead of. You getting all your information coming in two weeks later, we have another conversation, maybe we think of a few other things and it just keeps piddling out like that.
Well, we tried to do it that way this time, but.
I think I met the burden that was asked.
Yes, and that's what I'm hoping to get. Because there's going to be situations where questions will raise other questions.
Can you, I'm just, I'm sorry, can you ask me questions? I mean, we're off the record at that point, I mean, it's all, I mean, so. You tell me, can we have Q and A, you know, offline, because I can give you the answer starting tomorrow.
If, if Sarah has a question, she can email it to you, you can answer her.
Right, uh, well, my other thought is by having the Q and A online and in, in, you know. Through email, when we come into the next meeting. The information would all get entered into the public record, we'd all be, you know, we would talk it through, but you wouldn't then be hit with. We asked you questions A and B, which then raised question C. And so then at the next meeting, you get question C, and then we wait another meeting and then, oh, there's question D and E. What I'm thinking is we do the back and forth. Online before the meeting, but then all of the answers and all the information will be made public, it's not gonna be a private conversation, it's just. Trying to move the ball forward a little bit more quickly for you.
Sure, I mean, I can all agree that, I think some questions will. And they won't solve everything, but certainly welcome whatever back and forth we want to have, uh, you know, between meetings.
Jim.
Just to follow up on my previous comment. That is approximately a hundred eighty feet a day of digging and backfilling and doing a curve course. That's. It's more than aggressive. It's just quite a unrealistic.
Michelle, did you have a question?
Well, being a Harris Road resident, I'm glad Travis brought that up, I just figured it went away, that's why. It wasn't, uh, being discussed, but I think Sarah's covered it, that. I just wanted, I wanted to know where the information's gonna be put so that. I, as a Harris Road resident, can, if this is the route we go. Find the questions and answers or be able to ask questions as well.
It seems like a, a useful tool, as you. In many towns that, that you have a, a site where people can post questions and you can come back with them to, with answers.
Oh, you want us to make a portal available for folks to, to write?
Well, it's gonna be kind of hard for, if Sarah gets her answer, question answered, if you want to post it somewhere. I, the, what, what Michelle just said is she's basically wants to be able to submit questions and see what other questions people have. God.
I just, I don't want this to be lost, I appreciate how open and how you've been answering questions, I think everyone wants to see some solutions to these power outages, it's just. You know, so create, so I'll let you know, we appreciate you wanting to get some, some action and. Worst thing to have, you know, nothing at all happened, but, uh, we'll make sure you're doing the right thing.
And by the end of the fall, since you're starting in Townsend, we should be able to get good feedback on how things are going in Townsend. So, uh, this, I didn't realize that this was such an, uh. A new approach to dealing with rural lines and. I think that we need to be very careful what we do, we want to do something that improves service, service has been terrible in that particular area. So, we, we want to do that, but we don't want to sacrifice. Um, what we have, yeah, so, uh, yeah. And that's, we're, we're sorry, we're a lot more.
Can I ask a question guys? Sorry to cut in, this is Dave Rosso, I joined a little late on Jockey Hall.
Dave, yes. Raise your hand Dave, I didn't see it.
What's that?
Did you raise your hand?
I thought I hit the button, but I maybe didn't.
Okay, all right, yes, you can, you can weigh in.
Um, I just had a, a question is, and I know Green Mountain called me the other day and was talking to me about it, because our farm here is. Unique and one of the first things we did was buy a backup generator when we moved back because of how much we lose it. And, and our lines run through our pastures where we, um, rotationally graze our cows every day, and so. The thought of moving the lines, I, um. Is great for them not to be there, but I didn't know if there was any clarification on. Lines being moved, does that mean then they're gonna go right in front of our house and obstruct kind of that? That view, or would they be underground?
The plan would be, to be underground and, you know, thank you, it was nice talking to you, um, you know, we could also bury them right where they stand.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's just one thing I was curious, I know we did, yeah.
Dave, uh, do those lines also carry, um, other, uh, services besides power?
So would that, Vicky, include, so we, you know, got routed to the new, um, fiber. Uh, um, internet, would that be part of that, or would that also have to stay?
This is just, this is just like Green Mountain Power.
Interesting, yeah, so, so yeah, they just ran that last fall. And run it right through the same line, because I know that for a fact, because they knocked on my door to ask if my electric fence was on.
So, so the, the, the poles wouldn't necessarily go away?
We, we own Green Mountain Power, it's the poles.
Uh-huh.
Fiber companies are licensed to attach, um, so we have negotiation power with them to. They, we were rebuilding this line, uh, we've done it. Number of times around the state, we will put their, you know, infrastructure in the ground, we'll lay conduit for them. Allow them, uh, to come and pull through, typically what we've seen is some grace period after we're built. And to your point four, in terms of them staying up, whole line staying up, or, you know, possibly up to a year. Uh, to give them the opportunity to move off, uh, and abandon, uh, their infrastructure as well, and then. A complete retirement's happened, so it's. It's a little bit of a phased approach, but the plan is to have communications partners. Uh, come with us, double pole line issue is. An hanging issue, I'll, I'll say throughout the state is something that we're, we're in fierce around, uh, with our leadership. Uh, and, and our partners and those, those organizations as well, so that's the goal, is to get everybody, uh, to go.
So you have Phidium totally on board with this? Because that's, that's who's basically. Okay, okay.
We don't have permission to do the project yet, so it's.
Right.
Those things where, yeah, we're, we're talking about it, all the other CUDs out there that are forming, this is where we're building, this is where we're going. If you're not attached yet, you know, um, how can we, you know, make accommodations? Uh, so it's, it's, um.
It's a big rush, yeah.
There's no question about it.
David.
Yeah, you can, sorry, I, I found the raise my hand button from before, you, that was gonna be, Vicky, my question is. Is it something that before this project started, could it be guaranteed that Phidium's on board? Just a thought.
Yeah, because there will be poles potentially to, to, to enter into your building.
Right.
If you don't have it buried.
Right.
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 So.
Okay, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
I, I really, you know, I, I think a big goal of this should be to get rid of poles and.
Yes, and I think, you know, it, it won't be a complete reading of them, I mean, there, there could be still holes on folks' property. Serving their residents and so forth, but in terms of the back one express that we've talked about, that is the goal is to. You know, get those long runs, you know, down, down under.
Travis.
I have a bit of information for you to attend, um. I did my site visit in most of the Harris Road project with, uh, Don Mills, so maybe you had a chat with him. Might help you out.
Yep, well, he's the operation supervisor.
Yeah.
Uh, he's the district, so.
Yep, I just wanted to give you that.
So we still have a lot of questions and, uh, I think that. Definitely check into that Harris Road situation and, yeah, it, it's a, it's a little, it's a little bit. We, we want, you know, sometimes you do these things and we jump and. It, we say, why did we do that in the long run, and it's not that we don't, we want to have better service, so there's, there, that's the ultimate goal. But if this is really, uh, something new for you guys, it's hard to be the guinea pig too. Yes, just to be clear, if, if we figure out what's going on with Harris, are we, is that gonna, would that? Potentially be something you could just go and get done and maybe get Phidium on board and.
To look at the project.
Yeah, okay, cool.
I render an answer tomorrow and.
But so you, but are we, we're a part of proof that, so.
Maybe they're gonna go tomorrow.
So, so you can be in touch with Travis.
Right.
About Harris.
Yeah.
And then if any of us have questions, we funnel them through you or just email you directly, what do we want to do?
Who?
Travis, because he's gonna be in touch with him.
Uh, no, I don't think Travis needs to have all the questions funneled through him necessarily. Uh, I think we should send them to Jeanette and Jeanette can send them over, how's that? We need one person. And then, then she can keep a running list of guests to that, uh. A running list of all these questions, but that's a good, I think that it's probably having. The person in the town office keep track of the questions that are being asked, and sometimes some of the questions may already be asked, so. She can say, oh, here, this is the answer we received. Thank you. Okay, so I don't think we're gonna sign tonight. You probably knew that. But thank you, thank you, and you know, these things that. It, there's a lot of moving parts to it and we just want to do what's right, and, and I agree with Jim, I don't know how you're gonna get that done, by the end of October.
Well.
Okay, thank you, and I know you need to get your words, bro. Two week, uh, no, it's September fifth. Thank, thank you so much, we appreciate them. All right, we're moving on to the highway department. Quotes to purchase the shipping container for the town garage. Okay, Travis. You want to buy the, the thirty-six hundred dollar one? Thirty-six hundred even, which one do you want? Um, are they comparable?
Yeah, they, yes.
Should we read this out to the?
Sure, I mean, uh, container guys came out, came in at thirty-six hundred each. USA containers thirty-six, sixty-nine, twenty-one. And radical storage, forty-five hundred each, all prices included, delivery. Um, I would like to purchase two of the forty-foot containers if, if I can, you know, they're. They're. Gonna be so handy, they free up a lot of room in the shop, stuff, tires. Cones, signage, um, our, our hydro蓄电 supplies, like. We're getting full house here and, and the ship, the extra space would be really super helpful.
Sarah.
Are these the ones you can enter from the side so that the stuff doesn't get buried all the way up at the front?
No, those are, those are all added, added costs.
Okay.
Um, no, but these are the extra tall, they're nine plus six.
You're just gonna be really organized.
Yeah.
Like, will you be able to store like the small truck, you know, the, like.
Yes.
Okay, small tractors, things like that.
The Ben track attachments, because we're not using the shed over at the, at the town hall, you know, stuff like that.
Do you have any update on that?
No, nothing yet.
So maybe we should get a couple of quotes. I think we need to do something, otherwise it may come down this winter. All right, does somebody want to make a motion to purchase a container?
I make a motion, motion that we purchase two shipping, forty-foot long shipping containers for use at the highway garage from container guys. At a price of thirty-six hundred dollars each, including delivery. Sorry.
Any discussion? All favor? All right, now, re- review road crew, crew applicants.
I only had one application, um, out of this session of running our ad. Um, but I feel pretty good about this applicant and I'd like to go ahead and, and, and take a chance and hire him. You know, I, I think that. He would. I think he's a good applicant. He, he has done work in the construction trades, automotive, forestry. He's currently working in the tire industry right now, but. I think he's gonna be a decent addition to the crew, he does not have a CDL. But is definitely willing to. Do whatever it takes to get one.
Okay. Is the CDL. Refresh us on how long it takes to get a CDL?
So he, he's gotta go through his permit, he's gotta first get his permit and have that for a period of time and then. And then we can enroll him in a. Uh, early education driver training.
So once he gets his permit, can he drive with you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
One of our license drivers, yes.
Okay, so if you want us to hire him, you need to give us his name and you need to tell us how much you want to pay.
Okay, I'd like to hire Wesley E. Dear. Um, at a rate of twenty-one fifty. Um, and I would like to. Add that after completion of his CDL process, I'm on a dollar.
Can we ask how far away he lives?
He lives on Sunset Lake Road.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So do we have to make a motion? Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize Travis to hire Wesley Ethier at a rate of twenty-one fifty per hour. Uh, with the understanding that upon completion of his CDL license, he will be given a raise of one dollar per hour.
Starting date of September fourth.
Starting date of September fourth. Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Yes. Good, good. All right, anything else Travis?
Yes, um, so I'd like to also announce that Chris Larson has given me his. Letter of resignation, retirement letter, um, uh, he's been an employee of seventeen plus years. And he has asked for his last day to be October twenty-second. And. I would like to. You know, start working with Jeanette in the next week or two and, and give a. An ad worked up and sent out if we can.
Okay. So we accept his letter of resignation?
Yes, and thank him for his many years of service that's counted over, um, and congratulations on retirement, yes.
Good for him.
Uh, so anybody have a problem with, uh, Travis working with Jeanette and getting this position advertised? Jeanette, do you have a problem with working with Travis on that?
Thanks for asking, Joe, of course not.
That would be fun, but um, yeah, wow, okay.
Okay.
Big shoes to fill, yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I have an update on the town hall windows.
Yes.
They completed ninety five percent of the project. One window was incorrect. Well, it was, the sticker on it was. The dimensions were what they said, but the contractor measured it and it is wrong from the factory. So he noted it. The project is not hundred percent completed, they will order a new window and they will send him back up to install it.
That didn't take long, I saw he was there and then he was gone.
Two guys yesterday, he was there by himself today.
Um, nice. Uh, and?
Yeah, yeah.
And are they, are they good? Do you like them?
Yes, they look great, um, there were, there was one damage to one screen. And you know, he he was very good and very honest about everything, he's like, I'm gonna note it and take pictures and. You know, I'm gonna make sure that this is, that went short window gets sent back and we get the right thing here for you and. We'll come back up and finish the project.
Great.
So.
Have you opened and closed them?
No, not yet.
That's, that is the question, can you open and close them?
And when you open them, do they stay off?
And the pain pains don't come flying in at you, right?
Yes.
Great, that's great news.
I also have an update on uh some of our flooding, bank stabilization projects. I have gotten stream alteration permits for some bank stabilization projects along. Blue City Road, the largest project has been completed. We're gonna be working up, up the dirt part of Blue City Road towards Sherman Road. Um, to you to finish up the that project and. I've gotta fix one of the head walls at the bottom of Collin Road, but we're in the process.
Good. Anything else? Sounds like you've been busy.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Eric is joining us uh on Zoom with the Economic Development Department's short term, long term. Rental Subcommittee Information Availability and Meeting Recap.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get it out to the public again that on the thirtieth of July, we did have our meeting with both select boards. To discuss uh recommendations put forth by the short term, long term rental subcommittee. Um, to, you know, possibly investigate a registration system for our local Airbnbs as well as. Uh, a handful of, you know, very non-invasive uh recommendations for those properties. Uh, when they are listed as short term rentals. So that information, the the minutes are up from that meeting, the 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 portion of the video that was recorded is up from that meeting. Uh, anyone looking for the report or the presentation we gave can reach out to me. Uh, any questions, you can reach out to me, I just wanted everybody to know that we're going to be, this is a conversation we're going to be having in Dover soon. We just wanted to give people that public notice that that we are going to be talking about it uh in the near future.
Thank you, Eric, and uh I think the minutes are posted on the website and the presentation is attached to it.
Yes.
Perfect, there you go.
There you go, so if you wanna read the minutes of the meeting on the Dover website, you just keep going and you get twenty pages of the presentation, so.
Gotcha, I have, I have the the full report as well, so I don't know if that part. Uh, I'll, I'll put that part up there as well, so the people have access to it.
It is so.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Anything else for us tonight?
Uh, just went to Randolph today, spoke at the Vermont Community Leaders Network Summit. Uh, Senator Welch was there, uh, there was, it was a really great turnout and Gretchen and I, Gretchen from Wilmington and I went up there. And spoke in a panel this afternoon about our efforts uh with Bytown, so it was great exposure. And I also got to attend some other learning things today, so it was a great day.
Right. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, fire department. First, first is fire department personnel recognition.
Yeah, so I'm just, um, because a lot of times like we just did the.
Jumped up so. Sorry.
So, you're gonna, Zach's not gonna believe this, but um, remember we promoted Zach. Vencekowski to lieutenant a while back. And I had trouble with his name, so I say it right, but um, back in June, you know, we had that really bad lightning storm. And Zach, you know, has a lot of experience on a department in Pennsylvania, so he said, wow, you know, we're gonna have a fire. Well, I've only been, I've only done like one fire with um, from a lightning strike. And I didn't take much of it, it was accidental, I went to the firehouse just in case there's something happening. And um, he's actually getting ready to pack up and leave. Um, he's been, wouldn't been a three hour or so, hour, four hours, five hours, six hours. And um, you know, and he got the tunnel for the um fire up in Swallow. New village, and the uh insurance adjuster was there saying, wow, he says, how many people you staff at your firehouse? And I said, well, really, nobody, I says, well, you know, nine, ten, eleven minute response, we see that, you know, the city one, it's like right next door. So that, you know, he was real impressed and I thought, I wanted to do this in July, you know, in earlier in August. But I just felt we should recognize them because it's nobody told him to do it. He did it on his own, it didn't make a difference, I mean, it's the house still burned and but and there was nobody in it, so there's no light. But if there hadn't been a light issue, or it hadn't been such a bad strike. Um, you know, it could have made a big difference, so I just, you know, as a new lieutenant, I thought it'd be nice to recognize him. And also a lot of times you recognize full time town employees. And even though their employees are not full time, you don't get to see them enough, so I thought it would have been right here and let you guys like give them.
Thank you.
It does matter, it matters for everybody in this room that response time is good because actuaries are constantly watching about it.
Yeah.
So it it makes a big difference in our insurance rates.
Thank you.
So I really appreciate that, so I just, like I said, I want to start new, just, I even asked my dress nicely.
Yes.
Great job, so thank you, Zach, he's doing a great job as one of our new officers. He's really um, working hard on the training program. And I'd like to be, try to do this, take about five minutes, you know, the second meeting in a month. And just um, you know, recognize different firemen, but I kinda have a few that we're gonna bring, but um Zach's also worked very hard with training. And they also had a big party at the firehouse the other night, the um Friday night. You can tell it's, you know, some people don't have a lot of life maybe, but. So there was three or four of them there doing entering reports, and we finally got the new reporting system in. And was it three or four, three of them, so what'd you say, like, five, six hours again?
Yeah.
This time I think it was for real, so they um, but he got a lot of the fire report.
Thank you, Zach.
All right, and then the other thing, glad Travis is here. Um, he's not talking to me, he's mad at me or something, but um, you know, we had the meeting about the flood.
No, Bobby comes to a lot of meetings now.
Bobby just, just thinks it's like.
He's a spectator now.
Um, so anyways, um, you know, I I just because I know uh Sarah and um. Vicki were at the meeting and um. Randy wasn't, but Mike was and and Travis. Uh, one of the things is after the, this last, you know, little event. There's kind of three things I think that I really wanna take away. And I don't know exactly how to do it, and I know when I mentioned it, Vicki told me that we need the the help, but. The first thing is, is any, if all went along, I don't know, Brady, if you remember a long time ago, you and I went to a fire accident. Early one morning over by Maranese where a car slid off the road, gone into that pulver. And nobody could see it, as you drove by, you couldn't see the car at all, it was down in there deep enough. And it's just a nasty, I'm sorry. It's just a nasty spot and um, when it, you know, with this last storm, um. The water is getting up pretty high, and you get a lot of small cars now, I was concerned or car would, you know, plane off into that pulver. You know, and if it's an electric car, who knows if anything's gonna work and then, you know. You you could have somebody be seriously injured, possibly die, so. Um, we went down with Mike, Albert, Gas and a few firemen, and we shut the northbound lane down. And it was kind of funny cuz, you know, I had asked Shelley to call the Highway State Highway and come up and. You know, I didn't know if there was something blocking the pulver. And then when I was talking to some people, I said, yeah, you know, every winter this, you know, it's always built up ice, it's just a lousy spot. And um, the V-train struck, they go by, but they went to throw that, you know, uh, road closed sign up by Timber Creek, which didn't make any sense, but that's a different topic. Um, so I'd really like to see, um, if we as a, as a select coordinate in town. They write a letter to V-train saying that that is a really bad area. And I don't even know if it's the size of the forward because it kind of comes in on a funky angle, but I think it really needs to be looked at and it's something that. Um, I mean, all went along, Randy, I mean, there's always ice filled up there. Um, and you know, there's anytime we get any kind of high water, that seems to flood. Now, I did see a B-trans guy on the low side of that forward about two weeks ago, so maybe they're checking it out, I I don't know, but. Um, I don't know if we start off with writing a letter to the.
We can, we can write a letter, we're gonna need to know exact location, so.
Yeah, it's um.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, is there, so maybe that's why he was, the V-trans guy was there. Maybe he's finally, you know, they pay for it, you know, it's before they pay, you guys always put it in the college. You and Gary Phil. Maybe there's a car wetted there. No, I mean, just the, the only reason that accident always stuck in my mind is the guy, I believe, he'd been drinking. Do you remember that, it was drink.
He'd been drinking?
And so he, you know, he left like at two or three in the morning, he drove to the ditch, he was there at like seven in the morning. When somebody drove by and happened to, you know, a truck went by, happened to behind up, they could see the the back end of the car, so it's a pretty big hole there. Uh, again, it wasn't a big car, but. You know, so I just, I have bad dreams, you know, I'm gonna get out of my career without having too many people in her. So that's one spot that we have a lot of issues with, the second one, it's been um. This kind of needs a thought, you're here, you probably talked about it, is Gay Lane over on Blue Brook Road. And it seems like, um, I know, what, you're, your first year here on Christmas Day. We're up there, and we were vacuuming people because we thought we were gonna lose the road. I can probably remember a dozen times it flooded, I believe it might, going out of rain, we had an issue over there. And we had an issue this storm, you know, and I I really think they probably, they did in, um. It did add a couple culverts, like overflow, it's like you do on a dam. On schoolway stuff, but it's still, stuff gets in that pulver cuz you got the the uh, bigger dams up above. Where that swamp is above your house and a lot of stuff comes down. The bridge there, I've never remember a problem with the bridge on a meat road, you ever? But it's always, once it gets passed there, it starts to back up and then it causes a problem on a meat road. So I.
And that's a private road.
That's a private road, actually, I mean, it's not.
No, Gay Lane. Yes, yes, that's, that's private roads.
I've been, yeah, been around for a little bit, I didn't know that, um, so Gay Lane, I didn't actually get to talk to the treasurer the other day.
They have an association?
Yes, they do.
So we're gonna need that.
Not a great association, but one of the things I mentioned is, they said, you know, we really should do something with that. So I didn't know if we could work i- as part of it, I know Tabby's kind of taken on a lot of this flood stuff. Um, and a lot of the FEMA stuff after the flood, so I didn't know if maybe the town was to sign on with them. And to try to do something, and maybe there'd be some grants available for them. Because I think like if they would put a box forward in there, I mean, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, isn't it? And, you know, I think there's raining, you know, fifteen, twelve owners up there have ten. So, you know, it's a lot of money per owner. Um, or the other thing I was gonna throw out too. And I, I do remember a lot of complaining when I first started working for the town. About Dover Hills and how bad the roads were and stuff, and they were all private roads. And the town took them over and there was a special assessment to those landowners for a period of time, so the town kind of funded some of the money. Um, but I think it would probably help him a lot, it would help case farming, fire department. If we could work with them to do something, and I don't know what that is, and I don't think it's gonna happen, you know, in the next. Month, two or maybe a year, but it's something to look forward to in the future.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know how to go about that, so.
Yeah, Tabby, what?
If you could give me the treasurer's information, we were talking to on the Gay Lane uh Association. I can get them some information about some of the remediation and some of the programs that are available through FEMA for private road work.
Very good, so you're gonna do that, right?
Yeah, I can take care of that.
Okay.
Just want you guys aware, the other part of it and part of the post-flood issue was we decided. That we were gonna try to like make some routes in the town to buy the, buy routes maybe a little bit smaller. And we're gonna do a training in September with the police department, both fire departments, highway department. Um, and select, and anybody wants to come and and kind of learn what to look for. Um, to kind of give Travis an extra, you know, expert eyes versus just. Uh, one of my firemen driving around saying, wow, that's really cool, and not knowing. What to do, and then the other part of that is, is um, probably having some equipment like a rake or shovel, because a lot of times. You know, before it gets really bad, rake or shovel can move a piece of wood out of a pulver or it could. You know, make, you can make a little water bar and redirect the water and it could save the road. Um, I think one of the things that really saved our backs, I don't know, Irene, was, I know the, the week, the. Last workday before that, you had cut a lot of water bars and roads and you checked everything, I mean, you built fuel tanks, we got very. We had some warning on that one, we got really lucky. Um, and I think it it really helped us that, that A-SAC got a lot of um, a lot of blasted wedges we could go steal. And then the um, that was it, and on the fire department, so we are gonna be doing that training. And we do have um, a new training program, I think I've mentioned before, a lot of online training and stuff and. Uh, one of our guys is really working well on that, so. Um, it's helped a lot, it's given, yeah, some really better quality, uh, some better quality training. And they, I think they were sending you an email, so you can get on if you want to.
I didn't get it yet.
Okay, I, we sent it to your select board.
Sure.
Yeah. Last night, so if you have it, let me know.
Okay.
And that was it, unless you guys have any questions or any thoughts.
Anybody? So to to put this V-trans letter together. Um, so. Can somebody?
If people wanna send me the particulars, I can try to take a first run at it. Okay, okay, and then if there's like a, I don't know, do we need to use like GPS coordinates for the location or a mile marker?
I don't know.
Cuz if I say Maranese, they're not.
No, but, but you can get that if you took a picture, you can take a picture and get the the.
The address, there's gotta be an address.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah.
I can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you, fire department. Uh, next, uh, the motion to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
Motion to go into the Board of Liquor Control.
Second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have various special uh, special event permits, um, and so. Do you want, do we have any issues with any of these? Okay, Sarah, you wanna just rattle it off in your motion?
Sure, special event permit for Mount Snow Block Party on August eighteenth for the Switchback Beer Works Inc. And special event permits for the Wine and Harvest Festival on September twenty third for Cold Spring Spirits LLC, Fable Farm Fermentery. This LLC, Vermont Vines on the River LLC, Snow Republic LLC, and Vermont Vermouth LLC.
Um, somebody wanna second that?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh. Motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control?
Motion to come out of Board of Liquor Control.
Second by Joe. All right, we have the consent agenda. Uh, we are not gonna approve the minutes of August first cuz they were posted on the website, but they weren't individually. I mean, sorry, July thirty first, because they were posted on the website, but they weren't individually emailed to the um select boards, I don't think many people read them. So we're just. You just did that?
I just sent them to you, uh, yes, so.
Thank you. We'll just postpone those to the next.
Sorry about that.
So we need a motion to approve the minutes of August first.
I'm mo- motion to approve the minutes of August first.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing none, all in favor? We need a motion to approve the warrants of August fifth for two hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve the warrants of August fifth for two hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars, seventy-one cents.
Any discussion? All in favor?
You, you haven't looked at them yet.
You haven't looked at them yet, though. Yeah.
I, I didn't say, I, yes.
Uh, we have concerts in the park, the Miles Band, the sixteenth at six PM, which is tomorrow night. Erica Reynolds on Sunday at two PM and Miss Paula and the Twain Busters on August twenty-seventh at two PM. Board of Civil Authority meeting. Here, six PM, Thursday night to go over the voter checklist. We need to have everybody here. A town. Town Fair is September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh in South Burlington.
I'm registered.
Sarah is going to that. Thank you letter from the Wyndham County Humane Society. Uh, for, for their donation from the town. They appreciate, they thank us again for our generous donation. Which was five hundred dollars and also from the Shire's Housing, thanking us for their gen- the generous donation of twenty-five thousand dollars. Do we have any liaison reports? To, I do not know. We need an executive session. Is anybody? Hearing that, I'd like to, nothing, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-two PM.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.